We could start with at least the formalities.
Yes, let's get that.
Okay. I'd like to announce the opening of the June 1st session of the municipal county commissioners. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as is for all.
Now, I want you to think that as we take a moment of silence, it would just pass Memorial Day, which has gone through various phases of decoration, and remember that Memorial Day was a time when we are honoring our dead, and many towns had events to do that, but I think that all of us should think about the living memorial, that we should have gratitude to all of those who have served, and especially those who are on active duty now. Thank you very much. We have, let's see, this will be the time for public comment, and I would invite anybody that wants to have public comment to raise their hands, and let's see, in a priority of effort if you don't mind, if the judge could speak first.
I guess, Ms. Dory.
Oh, only, only, when I'm up there. My name is John Ellis. I live across the street, and I have a very deep respect and honor for the American flag. Your American flag is a total disgrace in front of this building. It is almost colorless. It is tattered. We offered probably five years ago to take the keys, be responsible for them, lower the flag on Memorial Day, and raise it at noon. We were turned down because that is a union job. It doesn't get done. We saw more veterans stand and look because you have one of the most photographed buildings. This is where it began, in Cape Cod, in all reality. This is your seat of government, and this is where the pride, respect, and honor should start. And sometimes putting a flag up 24/7 is not good because you never look at it. I have nothing more to say.
Thank you, Joni. Okay, anybody else? Yes or no?
I'm Jerry Rutherford, speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Cape Cod area. The League believes that the longstanding practice of allowing for the opportunity for the public to present comment to the Board of Commissioners at their weekly meetings is of value in fostering public participation in the governmental process. We, of course, understand that the Board cannot respond and discuss items not on the meeting agenda, but we believe that this channel to provide information and questions to the Board is of value to both the Board and to the public. In order to ensure the orderly conduct of public business, there must be straightforward, well-publicized rules for such periods of comment as well as for the conduct of the business meeting itself. Transparency in government is essential, and that's our major issue at the League. We try, we let all public business be conducted in open. We trust a policy for public comment can be developed that will conform to the open meeting laws while allowing for continued public comment of that sort.
Thank you, Ms. Dory.
Would you like a copy, or is that not yet?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Dory. I wanted to give us, change direction, some indication of when the commissioners will be taking up the issues of transparency, public respect, financial transfers, possible conflicts among C-VAC, CLC, and the commissioners. I believe that we did have some promise that those issues would be taken up, and I'm wondering when that will happen.
Thank you. I believe that we're, if I may, I believe that we are signing a letter today, let's see, asking the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op to hold a public information session on the relationship between the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op and Cape Light. I believe that, in my opinion, that that addresses the questions that you have.
Mr. Chairman, may I? May I? Just to go a little further than that, in our--
No, you can't. Wait a minute. If I could just say, he made a request, we can take it up when we talk about the letter.
Right.
Okay, that will be addressed.
That's part of the comment, but we will address it as we take up the letter that we are going to send that relates to your question.
Today, you go.
Today, yes.
And you had a question? Please, I'm sorry, your name is?
Barbara Howard, and I'm from Cambridge. I have, want to discuss something, mention something that has discussed for rather a few weeks now. I'm new to the Cape, and this is addressing for you, Mr. Dory. While I have to write it down so I don't, some of the blithering, it is. While I am sure it's difficult to find willing and able people to fill the many slots needed to run a community, or a county, or a town, the dearth of candidates poses a threat of too few participants and too great a probability of conflicts of interest. My comment is directed to you, Mr. Dory, regarding a comment that you made shortly after the commissioners' vote to approve the forwarding of the Assembly, to the Assembly of the minimum standards for the winter buys. Your comment included the fact that you could not vote formally and formally approve something that C-VAC or CLC did not support. As a commissioner, your responsibility is to me, is to my community, is to my town, is to my, and my town's welfare. C-VAC's responsibility is to itself, its debts, lining its pockets at all costs, including mine, including my communities, including my town, including my county. There is the conflict. Your comment shows that you are personally conflicted. When you are a commissioner, your first responsibility is to us. The problems or interests of C-VAC or CLC should have absolutely no bearing on your decisions as a commissioner. In light of this clear conflict of interest, I hope that any future votes that may be required of this commission, of your commissioners, where C-VAC or CLC are in any way connected to the outcome, my hope is that you will have the personal integrity and the courage to refuse yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? There are none? Let's see, we'll start our agenda, and I believe that the first item on the agenda is the open, special meeting laws. I believe we've seen the audience, so.
Hey, Bob.
Okay, where should we start on this?
Well, Bob gave you actually three, he gave you an open meeting or an open forum, and executive sessions. He gave you a memo on notice and open discussion requirements under the open meeting law, and he gave you a memo on the public comment policy.
What I gave you was there are two public comments, just as suggestions, because this is completely within your authority to define how you want to do the public comment. One is, basically, the difference is very simple. One is a very unrestricted comment in terms of the notice and the agenda, and that would basically say that people would have the right to come here at will and present their comments without any agenda item being posted, and you, the restriction on that would be just what you've just done. You would have to refrain from comment during the public comment section, and then take it up either if you had it as a posted item on that day's agenda, or you could take it up on a subsequent agenda. Now, don't forget, when we're talking about the agenda, it's not as burdensome as it may seem. You're required 48 hours before the meeting to post an agenda of anything the chair reasonably believes is going to be discussed, so that's pretty broad, and then you can update, you can update it actually, you know, up to the point where you know something is going to be discussed if somebody contacts the chair and said, "I'd like to do this." So I think it actually can work easier than it seems.
Just to clarify, prior to the 48 hours, you can't do it within the 48 hours.
No, you can't.
You can, you can update it within the 48 hours.
You can.
It says that in the, in the open meeting handbook, the Attorney General recommends that, and incidentally, just so we're absolutely precise, that's not in the law itself, but it is in the Attorney General's interpretation. Don't forget, the Attorney General does have jurisdiction to issue regulations, and in that vein, I might mention that the Attorney General has opened up a comment up until yesterday, additional comment about the issue of agendas and forums and public comment, and there may be subsequent regulations which will help. The other, the other is more restrictive in terms of agenda, but it actually allows you to discuss the, and respond to the public comments. That would be a suggestion that, for instance, any of the people here would have called the county administrator last week on Thursday up until the 48 hours and say, "I want to come and talk to the agenda, I want to, I want to talk about the American flag, and I want to address," and it would be put on the agenda, and the person would be, would be told what time to come, and they would be able to make their comment, and you could then respond. So those are the two public comment, you know, they're two different variations, but basically the same thing.
I have, in regards to conversations that have been previously discussed, and say, for instance, this morning, someone asked a question about, you know, we've asked this question, this is not something that hasn't been on an agenda or part of a dialogue. Can that be responded to?
If the question is, when is something going to be discussed, that can be responded to as long as you are not commenting on your position on the issue.
Okay, what if there has been, what if there has been discussion, and there's information to share, on the question that the person has asked? So the person has asked a question, they've been asking for clarification on a question. We have some clarification, not all, but some. So why can't we just inform the public of what we have done so far, since that has been an ongoing question?
Well, if the question relates to scheduling, and when something is going to be talked about, you are allowed to respond, and you, as long as you are not in the course of responding, reflecting any public, or any personal opinions that you have about the issue as opposed to the schedule. So you can share information about scheduling, but when it gets to the substantive matter of the issue, you then are in danger of deliberating and actually moving towards making a decision, and you have to do that in the posted agenda context.
Okay, I am not stuck talking about deliberating, I'm talking about sharing information, facts. This is something that we have learned since here, and this is a fact. It doesn't mean that you're going to get into a discussion, it doesn't mean, and you can say that this is going to be further discussed and reviewed at another time, but this is where we are, and this is where we're going.
Well, I think the answer to that is that what is so-called fact may be in the eye of the beholder, and obviously, the discussion can begin if, if there are, you know, clear empirical facts that don't relate to a specific opinion a board member may have, but it is the responsibility of the chair, when the chair believes that those discussions are veering into the area of deliberation, to stop the discussion and say, "This needs to be put on a posted agenda item, and we'll do this next, at the next meeting," if it gets to that point.
Well, we'll see how it goes today. You can be the judge of that.
Well, I, I was reading these, and I thought the simpler the policy can be, the better. And so the idea of public comment is, if someone comes in, and like this morning, Judy Ellis came in and wanted to tell us about a situation, and also she left some information regarding an event that's occurring next week that, that we would be very interested in, and, and so that, to me, really fits the definition of public comment. Kind of a note, and you could write a note to the commissioners, or you could come in and read it, or you could say it, similar to what Jerry did, of the position of the League of Women Voters. And, and that's very helpful to have that, and it's also helpful to have it in writing, too, Jerry, just, just--
I try.
I know, it's great. I mean, you can say it, but it's nice to have it in writing. That's the way I see public comment. So that's very simple, if that's what you want to do, you can just come in and do that.
Can I, can I, because I want to comment on Joni's issue, because I think that is a good example, and it's timely that she's here today. And then I couldn't even respond, and this is kind of where it gets kind of dicey, Bob, and it sounds like to me that, you know, kind of reading this too narrowly defeats the whole purpose of it in some ways. I could say to Joni, "Joni, I will have Bob Troy look into your question, and I know the flag out there is lit, sometimes the lighting doesn't quite work right, and we'll look at getting maybe a new flag." That's all it requires, kind of interchange to do. Thank you for telling us that, I didn't know that.
Well, what we could do, I mean, I think the other thing we could do is in terms of follow-up, is say, when we're talking with you about your report and all that--
Yeah.
We could say, we're asking you to follow up, not that you have to--
Exactly, yes.
But would you follow up on the comment that was brought, so that we can discuss that at another time, or come back to us with a report, or investigate it, or give us some recommendations as to what should be done?
Or just fix it.
Yeah, and that's not deliberating with the individual, it's following up on, on a situation that was brought. So I think it's just simply very simple. Now, if somebody wants to have a discussion with the commissioners, then they do, as Bob suggested, you just call and say, "I have an issue," whatever it might be, "and I would like to have a discussion with the commissioners about this, and I would like to be on the agenda," and then they would be, you would be asked to provide information and to include in the agenda, so that when we receive the agenda, we receive the backup information. If you, like, I, for instance, I'm thinking of the Greenhouse, remember the Greenhouse? That if we had that backup information when, I can't remember now who it was, they got the grant from the EDC for the Greenhouse?
Oh, that was Brian Bragginton Smith.
Brian Bragginton Smith. So he wanted to come in and discuss the witness, so he provided the information that he had from the EDC for us, it was there, available to us, so we knew what it was all about, we read it prior to the meeting, and then we had a discussion with him about it. He told us what his concerns were, what he would like us to do to fix his problems with, about the grant. Remember, he wanted to extend the time because the company couldn't provide the shed in sufficient time, so he needed to extend the time, and that's, that's the perfect reason why someone would want to be on the agenda. Or maybe they want to have a policy discussion on aquaculture, or something like that, and provide whatever backup information, and then, then we can have a very knowledgeable discussion about it. Sometimes if someone brings something unannounced like that for a discussion, and you're not prepared for that, it's almost a waste of everybody's time because it becomes one-sided.
Now, in speaking of, you know, in that vein, when Jim Rogers comes in and asks for us to, let's say, to pursue a matter that has been brought up several times, and we have looked at that and decided that the jurisdiction doesn't belong with us, then we transferred that, to me, that addresses--
Well, we're going to take that up with the letter. But I think, sometimes if somebody brings something up, even in public comment, or they bring something up in an agenda, you can't, maybe it isn't appropriate to make a decision at that time, but people need to know that. Or, or you can say, "We're going to have to take that under advisement," and when we do decide that we need to make a decision about it, it'll get posted on the agenda, and it'll be notified, so that they don't sit back and wonder what's going to happen.
I have another question. What if the, what if the, what if the question, what if somebody calls and wants to put something on the agenda, and the chair, the particular chair, I'm not saying this particular chair, I'm saying any chair in the future, doesn't want to discuss it? And it's their judgment, and it really should be discussed. Where does that fall?
Well, that, and that is, once again, that's the beauty of being able to set your own policy. You can, as a board, say that if one of the commissioners wants to put something on for discussion, that should be a right, or you can refer, if, as I said in the memo, if there were a dispute, and this is completely, you know, theoretical about that, the board always operates by majority rule, and so, for instance, let me draw, in a theoretical situation, somebody, let's say, that was concerned about, I'm just going to say, say the birds and the bees on Cape Cod, said they want to address the county commissioners, and the chair said, "No, I don't think that's appropriate, then one of the commissioners can say, 'Well, the birds and the bees is proposed to be discussed, and I move that we put it on the next meeting, and you, as a board, can vote to do that.'"
Okay.
Because obviously, in the end, when you think about it, just, it's common sense, the board by a majority controls the chairmanship.
Exactly.
So if something like that doesn't, you know, then if, if there weren't that flexibility, then the chair would conceivably, you know, be subject to challenge.
And that could happen even within a meeting, say, if there was going to be a discussion that's, that's being shut down by one member, the other two members could move that this discussion continue. If it has been, if it's within the parameters of the open meeting--
Right, exactly.
I'm not saying, and I do think that there is a place for public comment, and, and that does not necessarily mean debate, you know, not to engage in a debate, or, and then, say, you know, after all this discussion, that's right, let's have a vote, because none of that is on the agenda. So you can't have a vote, and you can't have a debate, but you can say, "That is valid, and it's, and we will take that up, and when we have information, we will share that with you." And that is basically the premise of what we're going to be discussing today on this next session.
Well, let me see if I, you know, I get that part of it, because I would welcome a majority, same, that the board, that we have a policy in place that defines when, you know, when, you know, when those things would occur. In the absence of a policy, you know, there, that does put an onus on the chair to act in what I would call an apparently arbitrary way in order to, you know, address the issue. So having said that, I think it's useful to have a policy--
Exactly.
--that clearly spells that out.
And you're exactly correct. That's what all boards need is a policy, and that's why we're doing this. We have caught up with, you know, we should have already had the policy discussed and in place, rather than discuss it in the context of any other discussions. We need to have a policy, the Assembly needs to have a policy. Most boards don't have any policies, people are just coming in, and what the problem is, when you don't have a policy, it invites violations of the open meeting law. The Attorney General has already had proceedings in which at least three towns have been told that their discussions do not comport with the open meeting law, and they have to correct them. So I agree 100% that, that's what we're trying to do, we need to, you, you as the Board of County Commissioners decide what the policy is, it's as simple as that. And then after that, it all kind of, it plays out in accordance with the policy.
There, in relation to what you said earlier, there's another issue, too. Sometimes the board will have an issue that's, that has conflict related to it, sometimes there are people who like it, in the community, and people who don't like it, and say the board has made a decision on it, but there are still people who are not happy with the decision, and it has come back two or three times. I'm thinking of a situation in Falmouth, naturally, like the Falmouth Heights Beach, when it gets closed, you know, when the parking lot gets closed, it comes up every year, they make a decision, people don't like it, they want to change, and then sometimes the chairman will get a request from the association to bring it back on the agenda again, and I think, in that situation, that's when the chair would say to the other members, "Look, I've received a request to take this up again, do you want to do this?" And then you would decide as a board, "No, I don't want to do it," or "Yes, I do, let's, let's decide to do it and have another discussion." So there might, might be things that you may want to consult with the other two, or the chair might want to consult with the other two members and say, "Is this something that we want to take up as a board?"
Well, I would suggest to you that that's an appropriate, you know--
Yeah, that's an appropriate thing to do.
--that that is an appropriate piece that should be in a policy.
Absolutely.
Because I would not want to, if I had a request directed at me for an agenda item, or if I had heard about it through the, you know, through our county administrator, I would feel an obligation to raise this with the two of you at a meeting and say, "Is this something, you know, that you want to discuss at a future time?" And I don't believe that there's been any instance where, you know, where I have gotten that direction, or we've asked for that, you know, kind of input.
Good question, a little clarification. Pat suggested sort of what you say here, Bob, plus, if I, if I understood correctly, your memo basically says, Bob, if I understand it, it's, I think, more like the Falmouth model, where you don't have public comment on your agenda at all. It's if you want to, something discussed, it, you call the chair or the administrator, and it gets put on the agenda specific to a topic.
If they want to have a deliberation, yes.
Well, so, so maybe that's just the part that I'm missing, is, and so if you have the public comment to accommodate things like Joni is bringing up, how do you distinguish one from another? How is that? Is that the discretion of the chair?
What I understood Pat to say is that the public has two rights, and, and the board is, by making this policy, bestowing these rights to the public. One is to come to a meeting and, and without any prior notice in any agenda item, and speak, understanding that the board outside of scheduling cannot respond because that would be deliberated. Or, the second part of the policy, if the public wanted to, they could simply contact, I, I, this is up to you whether you want it done through the administrative offices or the chair, it's probably better to have it done through the administrative offices, contact the administrative offices and say, "I want to come and talk about the American flag, and I want, I want the board to comment on my thoughts, I want to have a deliberation," and then that would be put on the agenda. So the public comment thing would be kind of in two sections. One would be scheduled items in which the, the board could respond, the county commissioners could respond, and the other would be unscheduled items, which is understood that you, you can't respond, and obviously, the county commissioners could, if there were the situation where somebody came and there was no agenda posting, they could say, "Well, this is a very interesting issue, would you mind coming next week, and we'll, we'll post it the agenda, and we'll have a discussion, and we'll deal with it."
Right.
And then you're all set.
Right, so, so I think I would propose that we have a open public comment, we can limit people's public comment to three minutes, for them to be able to inform us completely of what they want to do. If it is something that, that they have informed, and that can be it, and we can say, "That is very interesting, thank you for bringing it up, we will get back to you, and we will put this on the agenda." And then there is that other section where those items would actually be listed, even if it's up to the last minute, up to the last hour of the meeting, so that it is at least posted outside. I believe we're supposed to have posted agendas waiting at the door for every single person who walks in, so that they can see that they have, that we have put this in at the last minute for our discussion, especially if it's timely. Some issues, people are bringing to us, they do need some sort of discussion, like, you know, "This is really serious, and we have to go forward on this." So those types of things can be made for, and then we have our other items of people coming before, you know, our unscheduled items--
I have some concern about, about something of importance that's not of emergency nature, that comes in at the last minute, that, you know, would allow us to have a deliberative discussion, because as I understand what the open meeting law suggests, is that if we have not, we have not met the 48-hour requirement that gives notice to all the public who choose to come or not come, then I think we're getting on what I'd call very tenuous ground in regard to compliance.
If I, if I could just follow with it, but that would be discretionary with the chair. The chair has that discretion, and so if the chair decided that something that was proposed within the 48 hours did not give the public and the press sufficient notice to, to have a kind of deliberative discussion, then the chair would retain the right not to put it on, and it would not be discussed. The board then could, at the meeting, couldn't discuss it, but it could decide to put it on the next meeting.
Now, that brings up, if I may, it brings up, let's say, a point on this particular agenda. Last week, we had, we had discussed the possibility of putting as an agenda item, a discussion of the continuum of care, whether or not the county, we as a county would support it. It did not make the agenda, but I'm aware that it was, there was a request, and there was an agreement that it would be on there. Now, in that particular instance, I have an item that I've added to the agenda called new business, and that certainly is new business. Now, what, what do I do in that? Now, what do I do in that case?
But unless, that's exactly what the, new business and old business cannot be covered for discussing things that aren't on the agenda. So in that particular case, what you have here is apparently an error, which happens, and can happen. You simply say, because you can always talk about scheduling. You can say, just what you just said, this was supposed to be in the agenda, and I am proposing to put it on the agenda next week, with the issue that you just said, and it would be put on the, unless there was some immediacy or some type of, you know, a real genuine emergency. I mean, that would be the way that you would do it.
Okay, so if I, just to follow up on that question. So if there are errors that, you know, that occur, that's your suggestion on how to deal with them as far as agenda issues?
Yes.
I hate to throw you under the bus, Bill, but you get this ahead of time, as do all of you. If you see something that's not on it, that's supposed to be on it, because I was not aware of this, and I'm not trying to throw you under the bus. That's part of the process. You need to let me or Kara know that that's not on here.
I sent you a email yesterday.
Yesterday's, you know, good.
Yeah, but now you understand that it would have been okay.
Yeah. Well, I would have said, as of 20, 35 minutes ago, I would have said, I can't change your agenda.
But now you know that you could have added that and had it sent out to all of the appropriate people. So that's how that will be taken care of in the future. Also, what if, and for instance, for a meeting like today, and I'm not even, I kind of remember what the reason you were there about the discussion.
Lee, Lee Hamilton.
Oh, yes, Lee. So it is just as well. But anyway, but what if we wanted to, what if there was that possibility of being able to discuss that? We're going to adjourn for a recess, we're reconvening at 1:00. What if we said, you know what, we really need to discuss that today? Whether it be that particular subject or whatever it may have been. Can we then post it that that will be then, we could state that here at this section of the meeting, that this was left off the agenda? We are reconvening at 1:00, and we will be discussing that, whatever that subject is?
Well, that would have to be really an emergency situation, because the public would not know that. They would already have to be at the meeting. If there's an important deliberation, then the public needs to know, and so does the press beforehand. I do want to tell you too, just to see, on page five of the Open Meeting Law Guide, which the Attorney General issued, I think there's going to be a new one. It says, I just want to make this clear. It says, while not required under the open law, public bodies are encouraged to make a revised list of topics to be discussed available to the public in advance of the meeting if the body intends to discuss topics that come up within the 48-hour period before the meeting. So that kind of speaks to what you said. So it does leave some wiggle room, but it would be, the burden would be on the public body, and people could legitimately claim that you had violated the open meeting law, and then you go through the whole complaint process, which you don't need.
And one other clarification. If we decided to put something on the agenda that we wanted to deliberate, we wanted to discuss and gather information, hash it over among ourselves, could that be done? I am assuming that that could be done, but a vote could not be taken on it because that was not informed, given the public notice. So you can say, you know, this was a very interesting discussion. We will take whatever we've learned, we can go home, you can do whatever research you want. We're going to put it back on the agenda item for next week, and we will actually have a vote on that next week.
Right.
So that's a deliberation, but without an action.
Right.
That's what I was going to differentiate in a way, in terms of something that comes up within the 48 hours. That if it's an emergency, pretty clear. Say there's a boil water order, or a water order, something like that. That's a real emergency. You can deliberate and vote on it. But it was something that came up that was more urgent rather than something of that nature, that you could actually deliberate on it, but you wouldn't vote on it. And you would say, we're going to deliberate this, actually, or have a discussion about it, but we will bring it, we'll have it on the agenda the following week, and we will continue the discussion and have a vote.
Typically, where it becomes an issue, Bill just raised an excellent point, is a couple of years ago, we had rabies kind of migrating down the Cape, and it just so happened that Sean came in and notified us, Sean O'Brien notified us on an Assembly Day, like today. And he asked if we could declare an emergency. There's a provision in charge for you to do that. You say there's an emergency situation. You signed an ordinance for a certain, supplemental ordinance for a certain amount of money. And that day, brought it over to the Assembly with an emergency provision, asking them to vote on it immediately. And that's kind of typically the thing.
That's clear.
But I'm thinking more urgent rather than an emergency. But still, there's an urgent issue that should be discussed.
Right. And there could be, yeah, that we need to take that area.
It's really good comments.
It is just basic comments.
Usually, I think.
And I do think that every opportunity that you can allow the public to comment, and, you know, to go back, I know that, you know, sometimes you do get very, it gets tiring where there's, number one, I think we have a transient community here, so there's always new people coming to the Cape, learning. So they might ask the question that we just answered two months ago, and we might have gone through six weeks of debate on that question. But now someone new is walking into the community and is asking this question. I think as public elected officials, it is our duty to answer those questions, no matter how many times we're asked, no matter how annoying it may be. And, you know, in the matter of discussion, you may even come up with another way of looking at it yourself, or saying, oh, how can we accommodate this so that it's, you know, whatever the issue may be? So I think to shut down any type of public comment or to limit it in that regard is not a good thing, so.
Okay, so I think at this point, you know, we have had some suggestions on establishing a policy with regard to public comment. We've had some input from Mark Troy in regard to the parameters that were involved. We have some opinions that have come up. I'll ask the sense of the board as to where, you know, where are we as far as, let's say, as far as moving forward on this item?
Well, I think, this memo on public comment is pretty simple and pretty clear.
Except I think it's missing the piece about the unscheduled items.
No, that's a separate policy. This is just public comment.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. Bob says, if you want to talk to the commissioners, you have to notify somebody.
No, that's a different one. There's, there's.
Well, you can, I'm talking.
That's the one I'm looking at, too.
What I could do, what I think that has been suggested, if you want, I can put, I think it's kind of an amalgamation of the two.
Yes, it is.
And I can send you something for the next meeting that would have.
Yes, that they can adopt.
That you can adopt. Because I understand, I think what I heard all of you agree on is what Commissioner Flynn suggested.
Right. Right, it's the, yeah, the open meeting, three minutes, and then the part of.
I think everything below policy and public comment is accurate. I don't think we've changed any of that. In between, what it's suggesting is that there will be, on the commissioner's agenda, an unscheduled items public comment. And maybe on the agenda, you just put in parentheses, you know, commenters note, and understand that the commissioners will not respond or comment to these items.
I also would like to move that we ensure that we have agendas, not only posted up, if that's, by law, we have to have it posted somewhere outside, but available for every member of the public with addendums. Because if, since that can, we can make additions up until pretty much the meeting, those addendum, you know, those additions to the agenda have to be printed out and also made available right before the meeting.
I'm a little concerned about that. We live in 48 hours, Bob, I'd say.
The 48 hour.
It is in the public, I agree with myself.
The 48-hour thing is frankly, is intended to cover the situation where something big has happened that is going to require, you know, less than the 48 notice. Something's happened in a contemporaneous thing. In other words, if there's a situation that exists on Tuesday of the week, and when the agenda is posted by Friday, it's not included on the agenda, that would not be the type of thing that the 48-hour thing is envisioned, because it's supposed to be set up in an orderly way. But on the other hand, if something happens Saturday, let's say it's a town, and there's a bridge, and I think the Attorney General uses this as an example, and a bridge, something has happened, and it's disrupting traffic. And the public, you know, and businesses need it, and the public, and so the chair then realizes, this may come up, at that time, you can post an addendum to the agenda saying, we are going to have public comment. And if it's an emergency situation, you can deliberate at that time. The law is flexible to deal. But the difference is, is something that is, you know, that, is something that is emergency in nature or has just come to the chair's attention. I think that's what the 48-hour thing.
So there has to be some kind of gatekeeper, is what I'm.
Exactly, yes.
You can't willy-nilly be changing the agenda, either to or not.
No, that's the chair's responsibility.
Okay, so that's the discretion of the chair.
Discretion of the chair.
Now, at that point, and I, I'd like to say that I believe in an inclusionary process, although I could exercise, let's say, that discretion. How do I communicate to the other two commissioners in regard to their opinion prior to?
You can't. You absolutely, you, you.
Even though it's part of schedule.
Well, I think the issue is, see, when it's a yes, it's probably not going to be as much of an issue when you say, yes, put it on the agenda, as when you say, no. So if you say, no, I'm not amending the agenda that time, because I don't feel it's worth. You should notify that person, I guess. Then they have the right to come in here and say, commissioners, I really think this is an issue. Then two votes will amend that and put it on a future agenda.
Exactly.
I would think that would be a really unusual situation.
It would be an unusual situation.
I mean, truly. The other thing, though, as long as we're talking about process and how we get this done, I think it's really important for the chair to finalize the agenda on a Friday.
I had been.
As best as possible.
Oh, you have been doing that, okay. Because I think.
Kara had been sending me the agenda on Friday, I went back on, and I missed.
Or even Thursday.
Because I tried to touch on it at the end of the meeting.
Maybe the summary stuff is, but the actual format of the meeting that earlier that gets done to be better.
I've been trying to keep up with that.
So with that, I mean, I do think that there are, before the final agenda is sent out, I think it would be good for us to have a copy of the draft. Because in the course of a discussion, such as, say, if it was the continuum of care, one of us could say, you know what, we discussed this last week, and it's not on here. Would you please include this? Also, there could be the time, there could be the moment where Pat, myself, Bill are at a meeting on a Monday. We're meeting on Wednesday. We want, something came up at that meeting that we want to discuss. We want to highlight it, we want to share that information, we want to bring it up. Maybe not have a vote on it, but to present it, make people aware of it, and that we need to discuss it the following week. I think that's also something that can be put on in the 48 hours and listed as an additional highlight, or it is going to be discussed, or commented on, maybe not a deliberation.
I think where, to answer the question you had, Bill, and I think it's partly what you're talking about, Sheila, too, is that if on Friday, for instance, before the agenda is posted, two of the commissioners felt something should be on, obviously, they can communicate with administration, and then, and not by the open meeting law. And then administration contacts the chair and says, there's two people of the commissioners who think this should be on the agenda, and then it's, then it's your.
Right, so I could go through, so if you go through the administrator, and that way we can discuss and be open.
Exactly. So I think you can work it all. I think it all works, and I think this is a very good policy.
So in any case, all we have to do is just add, tell Kara to add the other two commissions to the distribution list on the, when the draft agenda goes out, and I think that addresses that.
Yes, that's a good idea.
And now that, you know, I think she's aware of my interest in having the agenda prior to the 48 hours for, let's say, for review. And that would just add to that. So we've already started that, and we're adding that as a continuation, so that's a good thing. Now, so at this point, as I understand it, you will draft something that includes comments and opinions with regard to the, our discussion, and you will provide something for us to review and adopt at our next meeting. So that would behoove us to have that as an item on the, on the agenda, so if we had any further, further comment and discussion. So I would direct Mark to make sure that that is included as a discussion item for next week. Is that?
That's fine.
Okay. So with that, what's our next item?
That's it for now?
What about this letter?
All right, now you have to talk about the letter, you're right.
Okay. Have all of you had an opportunity?
Just to frame the background, remember, you, in open session, after the executive session, took a vote to direct your CEVAC representative meeting to bring that letter? And maybe, Bill, for the record, you want to read your own file?
If I, I think you should read the letter.
Okay. The letter that's been suggested. Dear Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. McLaughlin, the President of the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op, the Board of County Commissioners has received written and oral requests from members of the public relative to the relationship between the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op and the Cape Light Compact. We recognize that as a board, we have no jurisdiction over these two entities beyond the contractual duties of administrative services agreements and our respective representatives to these boards as members, and that the commissioners are not the appropriate entity to respond to these inquiries. As a result, we respectfully request that the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op hold a public informational session on the relationship between the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op and the Cape Light. We believe that this constructive action will provide a forum for you to review with the public, the relationship between two public organizations, and to highlight the many accomplishments of both entities. We understand that you are not at liberty to discuss the Brewster Wind Project due to pending litigation, and we do not mean to imply that this should be the subject of the informational session. Thank you for your consideration of this request, and it would be signed by the three of us.
May I speak? Okay. And this is where I did want to address the public as well as, and answer those questions. As it states in this letter, we were informed by council last week that we have no authority, we have no leading authority over either Cape Light Compact or CEVAC. Our representatives on those boards have equal standing among all the other representatives. So our chip in that game is basically our representative, as it is in every other town. So having, you know, concluded that, we have, we then felt that it is good, good policy for CEVAC and CLC to have an information session to discuss their formation, their relationship, and how they interact, and how they interact with the public and the public's participation. I think that that's only, and also to clarify, again, I believe that we will be invited to that forum, and I would like it to be an open forum, so that it can be a healthy discussion and really answer people's questions as far as policies, relationships, and that sort of thing. I do also want to say that we have people on this board, and has been stated that there is sort of overlaps here. And there's also the appearance that we have more control than we do. These, these items and many other items are part of a review that we've already recognized, that we could be consolidating different departments, that we might have overlap in departments. These are things that we were aware of a couple of years ago, but this year, we were able to do, we have been doing an internal audit. That internal audit will be coming before us. So those issues are, have been, already been, you know, recognized by this board and are being reviewed. So that is in the process, and that will all come, whatever comes of those discussions will become public. But that is really basically the actions that we've taken. So that is to answer, we do not have very much authority over those two entities, if any.
I have to clarify something with regard to my service on the Cape Light Compact. Although I vote with regard to policy matters, I do not vote with regard to financial issues. And that is because the 21 towns, under the intergovernmental agreement, use a weighted vote in order to vote on financial issues. So they are controlling the money that, you know, that is, that the Cape Light Compact has under its control. And I think that's an important distinction to make.
The other point I want, that I think I'd like to make too, is that in the session, we had a very long session about this. And we really looked at how each of those groups were formed. The Cape Light Compact, which is the result of an intergovernmental agreement among all the 15 towns, the county and Martha's Vineyard, Dukes County as well. And then it's as an aggregator. And you have to understand what all that means to know how it functions. And then CEVAC was formed under a statute with a different purpose. And they, and the towns are the representatives on both of those governing boards. So we have no executive authority over either one because they are organized under specific statutes and by intergovernmental agreements, and they function based on those agreements or by those statutes. So we felt that it was the, that the best way to keep, to more fully inform the public and give them the opportunity to really understand why these groups were formed in the first place, what their purpose is, how they. place, what their purpose is, how they function, is to have the C-VAC board actually hold that public informational meeting because they, and along with their Compact member, Compact is a member of C-VAC, that it would be much more informational. So that is the reason behind the letter, so that this meeting can take place, and all the questions that many of you in the public have been asked and will be answered, hopefully, in this public forum.
Okay. So with that, I guess we will forward the letter.
We will forward the letter, and I will just request that when we do get our audit, and we have had a chance to discuss that, that we do have a meeting. We schedule that within the next... We're anticipating maybe next week getting it, so within the next month to have a open session and have that on our agenda.
Open session is open.
And discuss what we have, what is in the review, the study that we're doing on the county government. I'm not talking about the special commission. I'm talking about the internal assessment.
Oh, you're talking...
Assessing, yeah.
Well, we...
Yes, we should hear from him by...
We want to have... That will be something that will be discussed, and more of these... There will be more answers, I think, available to the public for what they may have that we can, that we are responsible for.
Well, sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Mark Morse is very good, but you're not obvious.
I know. You have to... Well, I actually called the office, his office, yesterday, the morning of it, because I was working on some of those things, and I thought, oh, I'll leave a message for him, and the phone rang, and he answered the phone. And I was like, shame on you.
Okay. So do we have anything else this morning?
Just...
We have some...
Do it here. Pat and I, of course, are going to the State House to testify on Representative Turner's bill regarding the C-Med. So we'll be gone at 1:00. We'll be in the...
So it's signed and...
So it's up to you whether you guys want to do this stuff now or later.
Yeah, it's up to you. Well, they will...
Able to do it both.
Well, the rest of the people will be coming in at 1:00, right?
That's right. Exactly.
So before we recess, I think we need to vote on some of these...
It's up to you.
Summary of actions?
Yeah, the summary of actions. Have you reviewed the summary of actions?
I have. I removed the summary of actions.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Going for the discussion. Is there anyone, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's a vote. So what I would suggest at this point before we go into recess, to sign the...
Can I just mention one thing? I just wanted to mention that I do have the agenda for the Assembly of Delegates today, and as you know, at...
Yes.
3:30 PM, they are having a hearing on a proposed supplemental budget ordinance that was submitted by Delegate King, just so you're aware of that.
Could we discuss that right here? I would like to discuss that.
Oh, yeah, simply.
No doubt.
What if they pass... We're not doing a supplemental budget again. I mean, they should have done this last week.
It is funds that are taken out of the statutory reserve. There is about $235,000 left in the statutory reserve. If they pass it, is it on the agenda?
Can we veto it if they...
Yeah, it is on their agenda.
Disapproval is the word. Yes, of course, certainly. It's like any other ordinance. You have the right to disapprove.
Well, if you're...
Although you go on...
Since we won't be there, my question would be, why did they not include this in the budget?
It's a 2011's for this fiscal year's supplemental.
Oh, okay. For this fiscal year.
It is on the original agenda.
I am totally against this because... And I'm not against these organizations, but this is throwing Band-Aids on problems. We are looking at, number one, the state, but never approve it. They have to have... When you're getting a grant or any type of money like this, you have to have a whole package of where you're partnering, you're doing 50-50. There's new ways of doing things because we have to consolidate what we're doing. We also have to have a healthier way of addressing these problems as opposed to just putting money on an issue without any results, goal, action.
I believe this is called earmarking.
Yes.
And I believe that that is something that's an asymmetry.
That's right. And it's also against... It's against everything that we worked towards as far as we've decided as a county in this Human Service Department, that we're not in the grant giving business.
Well, I... The other piece is that I believe that last year, my recollection is that one of the people that is mentioned, Elder Services, the overnights.
That's the overnight, yeah.
Had come in and...
There you go.
They got that for last year. That's not what kind of work. There was that supplemental...
And there was a very, there was a very big outcry from the Human Service community because they have all refrained. Everybody, every one of them would like to be here.
Yeah, just to clarify, actually, they did get it this fiscal year. It was asked for for their FLY 2010 budget. It was to close the gap.
And you said that to Diane Casey Lee that you will not get that until July. So why are we doing... Why is she doing this?
Well, I think that all of these matters should be brought up to the Assembly.
Well, and the other part, too, I think what Cheryl was saying was about our Human Services Departments. They, that Beth has worked so closely with all of these providers that they all understand what the limitations are in terms of allocation of funding, and they've all accepted the fact, and they've all pretty much, without any written agreements, understood that they're not going to go individually toward the county or anywhere else and try to, you know, try to access funding on their own, that it was sort of not, you know, not the dumb thing to do.
It suggests that although we have taken a position, and we have a member of our staff that is providing guidance, we now provide, we are, if we support this when it comes before us, that we're suggesting that it doesn't matter what we put in the budget, there's always another avenue that can be pursued that... So when you say Band-Aid, I think it's more opening a door to what I'd call a disorganized way of...
It's a process approach. Absolutely.
Yeah. It's against all the policies that we're trying to do.
Yeah, it is.
And we're really trying to establish, and we're trying to establish these guidelines as they are given to us by the state because they're trying to consolidate as well.
Well, I don't...
So we're trying to encourage people to act differently and to... There's a request...
That's of course, if it comes before you.
Yeah, if it comes before you.
Yeah, if it comes before us. So I think that...
So now, I have a... I will not be able to, after we finish our meeting this afternoon, I... My wife is ill and is a contractor.
Yeah. Wasn't he supposed to be scheduled for today?
Wasn't he on public comment earlier?
No, he came in last week.
I know, but he requested to be here.
Did you suggest it? Didn't you ask him to come back?
That was another one, yes. We did.
Okay.
As he said...
Okay. Well, I'm going to refer to his...
Not me.
His Vance agency. He was slow walking in here and ask if it's all right to give public comment, if that's all right.
That's fine. I would love to have it.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that you were meeting at 9:00. I would have been here at 9:00.
No problem.
Luke, come forward.
Come, Luke.
Yeah. I'll be very brief.
It'd be like Joan, I think, something very important, slightly.
Can I sit down?
Please.
Please do.
How are you doing?
Not too good.
Oh.
That's why I'm kind of concerned about the things up the hill. But first of all, I wanted to say that, remind about next... I understand Commissioner Flynn, you're going to be there?
Yes, I will, at mercy of the earth, I will be there.
You are? You're going to be prepared to...
Yes.
Something like that. So that's the sixes, you know, and the programs are being made, and you'll be ready this afternoon.
Okay, good.
Pick up on it.
All right. That would be great.
The matter I came in last week was to bring, give you an update on things that are moving very fast. The room is pretty much full, and we have a wonderful collection I brought over from some of the things that were brought over here in 1939 by Mayor Dodd from Barnstable England. And this was recently given to me by the mayor when he came over. I think you might like to take a look at that because, as you know, they bestowed an honor on me, and we... I'm in contact with them every week by phone.
I know that. I didn't read and read them.
And they love this area so much, they're coming back.
Oh, good.
But anyway, there's an update, and I'd like to invite you all again up at your earliest convenience to see what we have there. We have that British collection, as I said, by Mayor Dodd that was brought here in 1939, and that and the other things we...
Now, that is open to the public?
No. No, because we're waiting for the building that we... I understand we got the approval to put the building up. I've got two or three avenues of funding. Hopefully, we can get that done at no cost of the county, and it'll be county...
Hopefully.
Well, pretty much sure.
You can make this room look like that if we try to... You know, I think we've said this several times, and this is one of these things that falls through the cracks. Scott Nickerson has been here requesting it to have a committee, a planning building committee. Michael O'Keefe has requested this personally from myself. I know he's mentioned it to you, Pat. He wants to be on that. He would like, he said, "I am paying rent over here, and I could be paying rent to you," you know, up at the Hill. So, you know, he is very, very much involved in wanting to get out of there, and I agree with that. I think that if we're going to be doing a museum with... We have a planning department. I would like to ask, since Mr. Nedzwicki is going to be here this afternoon, that we charge the Cape Cod Commission, just to look at the county as a plan, can they come up with a plan for the offices and...
It's very nice.
Whether we do this or not, whether we do it or not, I think we need to have people brought in. Everyone is asking for us. We can consolidate. We can make, we can better utilize these buildings, and maybe even, you know, get rent in the interim. So could we please ask for that charge to be done, committed today while he is here? Because he has mentioned it to me. You know, you have to direct me to do it, and I thought that we had discussed that and said that we would, but that has never been a direct communication.
In any case, being an ex-marine, I'm going to ask him to exercise some initiative.
Well, he can't do any initiative if we don't ask him.
Well, okay. I just wanted to give you an update on that, and whenever you get a chance, let me know when you'd like to come up. We're, as they say, we're just about out of Rome, so we're ready for phase two, which would be the building.
Right.
And I'll get going on the funding on that.
You got a commitment from Luke? That's kind of what we were waiting for, the commitment and money.
Take the nursing home for three or four hours a day.
Okay. I'll see you next week.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
God bless.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to say, when you meet with Paul, maybe you might want to talk about some, a recommendation for facilities planning, so that instead of having them do it, you come up with what would be an appropriate facilities planning...
Exactly. That's what I'm asking. I mean, just a proposal of what they would, how they would see it. I mean, we have them there. We've discussed this for about a year.
Do you want to take a copy of your testimony in the bill? Do you have...
I redid it.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to give you a copy of what I redid. It's right here.
Okay. So we can submit it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, well, yes.
Okay. Do we have any other business this morning? I don't think so. If not, I'd like to... If you need a motion to go into recess, except for signing papers and then reconvene at 1:00.
I would move that we go into recess. We'll continue signing papers. We will reconvene at 1:00, at which time the county administrator and Commissioner Flynn will not be present, as they will be in Boston giving testimony, and we will then reconvene at that point.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're just reconvene?
Okay. Are you ready?
We are.
Okay. We're reconvening the June 1st meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners, and we'll start off with a Transportation Week update, and Lev Melikoff, and I believe it's Tom Cahill is with us as well.
Yes. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the county, or we have been recognized as Cape Cod Commission and Barnstable County.
Show that so the camera can pick it up.
In the activities, Mass Dot, Mass Rides provided ceremony and awards a couple of months ago, and I mean, and you get this framed, but I just wanted to share that with the county commissioners. Based on the carpool spaces, the bike racks, the other programs that we're involved with with Mass Rides and Mass DOT, and so we've been recognized as the pace setter award for that. And in line with that, I'm here today to introduce a request to the signing of our annual proclamation for Cape Cod Smart Transportation Week, which is scheduled to take place the last week of June. And I have a pen if you need it.
I have a pen.
Okay.
I'm going to give it a bit of...
So it's June 26th through July 2nd. So this is the week when the weather is beautiful on Cape Cod, and the Transit Authority, and Tom Care is going to speak a little bit about some of what they have to offer as being a key partner in both as a service provider and also great support in organizing some of the events that we had last year that we hope to continue this year. We're looking to have our commuter rally at noon on Wednesday, so-called Smart Transportation Day, here in the Village with...
Now, tell people what that date is again, exactly.
That would be Wednesday, June 29th, at 12:00 noon in Parkland here in Barnstable Village, and we're hoping to have, again, the Transit Authority will be participating as well as Mass Rides, Mass Bike, and others involved in the transportation system on Cape Cod, and a number of other events throughout the week that are still being scheduled. But if you go to the website, gocapecod.org/go-smart, you can see a recap of the things that went on last year, and we look to do something similar this year, so...
I should mention that Mary Pat Flynn is in Boston testifying on a matter of importance to us, so that's why she's not here. And I would ask you, would you want us to wait to get her signature on this?
Certainly. If I could just pass that on.
Yes. We'll make sure that it gets into her packet.
Would you give this to drop her off at the front desk with Kara?
Okay.
And tell her that we need to get Pat's signature on it.
Certainly. And I didn't want to listen. I'm here not saying anything.
No, not at all. No, you don't have to do that now. But, you know, but anyway, I wanted to make, you know, make people aware that, you know, Pat is working for all of us, you know, in Boston right now.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
And by the way, Transportation Week, you know, is very important. I'm glad to see that we got recognition from the Department of Transportation. I know that the Department of Transportation, you know, is doing everything that it can to support, you know, all the transportation aspects, and I was very encouraged at the RTA meeting that they put public transportation on the same level as transportation with regard to support of failing infrastructure. I think that's an important thing for the people of Cape Cod to know, that the policy of this administration is indeed to support all the aspects of, you know, of transportation. And with that, I guess that we would segue into Tom Cahill.
Oh, so if I could just ask one question before... If I could just ask one question before. You were finished?
Yes. I think we've got our accomplishment here for today. And of course, the big news will be what happens during the Smart Transportation Week.
And have you found that there's more people going on to go Cape Cod and go looking at different alternatives as far as the transportation?
Well, I think we've really been growing the service with the online services on transportation, including the Smart Guide and many of the planning tools that the RTA hosts. And we've been building links back and forth between our website and those other services so that it makes it easier for people to find what -- find out what the options are. People years ago didn't even know there was a bus service, and now I think it's in the front of the mind for many people.
Good. Okay, great. Then it's all working. Hi, Tom.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come over and say a few words. I want to first say, I want to thank you both for your leadership in regard to recognizing transportation as a very important matter here in our region. Obviously, transportation is important everywhere, but in our region, it's always been a very high priority because of the unique characteristics of our county. And I know that this county particularly has continued to display leadership in that regard. My friend, Commissioner Dory, is also on the board at the RTA, so he keeps us running around to make sure that we're trying to make improvements. So, I want to thank you from the outset. One of the things that I've enjoyed, I think, the most is working closely with the planning agency. They've got a lot of very talented folks there, and we call on them for advice and guidance on a lot of things. Lev, obviously, on a number of things, but recently, you know, Tabitha and some other folks there, and certainly Glenn, who are always there to advise and guide us when we have questions, because it seems like we're pushing the envelope a lot with our transportation ideas. We've recently tried to enhance our multimodal approach towards things on Cape Cod where all of our transportation partners are working closely together. We have a multimodal meeting every couple of weeks, including, you know, air, marine, bike, rail, and bus. And we talk about opportunities to collaborate, and we've had a lot of success in terms of coordinating scheduling and, you know, making not only the tourist experience on Cape Cod better, but residents as well, knowing that there's a dependable, punctual service that they can access. So, I would say that we're doing a lot of things with bikes. We just completed an effort with the commission on developing a bike map. And although I've been involved with bicycle transportation for a long time, I really didn't want to produce something that really wasn't helpful to the cyclist. So, what we did was, we called all 15 towns on Cape Cod, and we asked their expert cycle folks to come in, and we've convened a couple of meetings and developed this really, really nice map that's broken down into each 15 town. It identifies the transit stops and bike opportunities. It's quite informative, and we recently unveiled that about a month ago. We used RTA enhancement funds that we're required to spend 1% of those funds, about 53 or seven formula funds on enhancements, and this was a good example of how it's going to benefit the county. We've also been placing shelters and bike racks around the Cape. You may have seen a few. There's one right out here. There's one on 132. We've got, I believe we've got 18 sited already, and we're putting bike racks beside the shelters. And, you know, they're very nice. They're aesthetically pleasing. They keep you away from the elements, and we've had good comments, and we've got a good opportunity to protect folks while they're waiting to get on our transportation. So, that's been a good story as well. Our fixed route ridership is up, continues to go up. I just checked before I came over here on our weekend service. It was up 40-plus percent from last year on Memorial Day weekend. I don't recall exactly what the weather was like a year ago, but 40% is significant. We went from like 2,900 riders to 43 or 4,400, I think, this weekend. And that's without any real Sunday service to speak of. So, our fixed route across the Cape has continued to flourish. You know, we are working on a very, very technical, intricate change to our dial-a-ride service, and it requires new software that's quite complicated and technical, but we're having a few issues with it presently. And I've been in touch with all of our customers that take our dial -- the old B-bus, to take our dial-a-ride service, and ask them to be patient for another week or two. We're working with a software company to try to iron out some concerns that we still have, but it's not functioning now, but it's going to get considerably better in the next couple of weeks. So, everything's pretty good. We have a joint reception planned for the 14th of June at the Hyannis Transportation Center in partnership with the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod, because they have a new service that they call it the Passport, where you can purchase a passport from them and visit the various venues, the arts venues. And come to find out, a lot of our fixed route service goes right by those venues. So, we thought we'd have a little event, make folks on the Cape aware that they can take our buses to get --
Take the bus to beauty.
Take the bus to beauty, absolutely. So, it's all pretty good. We're, you know, we're trying to do a lot of good things and innovative things to try to improve public transportation here on the Cape. You know, we've got a few challenges in front of us that Bill, as a member of the board, is aware of, trying to create an upper Cape fixed route service, which is very important, and identifying the resources to make that happen is challenging, but I'm committed to doing it. So, I guess as a former politician, you give me the stage, I won't shut up. So, I'll shut up now and answer any questions.
Well, first of all, if I may, okay? This Charlie Card, which you can get at the Immortal Center, is intended to allow you to have cash-free or cash-carrying free service throughout the Cape. And I believe that one of the intentions that we have is that you get off at a plane in Logan, and you can get to Provincetown either by ground or by sea, you know, by using, you know, by using this. And that, for example, I had a constituent, you know, approach me saying that his son's car had broken down, and although we can get him to work on time, he needs some help getting him picked up at the end of the day. And I said that that's where the dial-a-ride, you know, now the B-bus service is available, and that, you know, that made him very happy. But also pointed out that we still have more work to do to make people aware that, you know, that the service is available. Should we get the other question?
Excuse me. Over the weekend, I had a station, I usually don't, you know, well, anyway, I had one of the local stations on, and they were giving a report on the traffic. And they were saying how approaching the bridge, it was going about 18 miles per hour, and on 28, at different locations on their speed sensors, they were able to say that there was this much traffic on 28 between this point and this point, and the mileage was going about 15 miles an hour or something like that. So, you could sort of gauge, oh, God, it's going to be slow going through these lights. Is that all part of what you're doing? Because I thought it was great. It really, to me, was helpful going out on the road.
Yeah, we've, you know, we're trying, everything we do, we consider congestion relief. You know, congestion is always an issue on Cape Cod, so all of our planning, you know, that's part of the discussion. We're becoming more advanced with technology and allowing people to have a car-free experience on Cape Cod. We've got a lot of long-range plans that are going to do that. And the fact that you folks are sponsoring this Smart Transportation Week is helpful because we educate a few more citizens as to what we have and what we plan to do. So, yeah, you know, I'm pleased that we're having this opportunity and good people to work with, and we're just going to keep making progress.
Well, that to me was just a great addition and service that technology has given us, where you are able to, they're able to pick up these different, you know, situations.
I just should mention that a lot of those services are also available through other venues, if you're not at your radio.
Listening to the radio, yes.
The 511 service, 511 Massachusetts provides that information. Of course, you shouldn't be dialing while you're driving, but before, know before you go is how I always approach it. And also on the Internet, we've created a lot of links from gocapecod.org/congestion to a lot of that mapping effort. The Google mapping is tracking, I guess, the speed of cell phones and providing that as a speed map. And of course, the RTA bus locator maps are also available. So, you can at least see if your bus there yet or not.
Yes.
And it also calculates the speed of the bus, so it helps you plan a little bit. Do I have time for the extra latte? Or do I need to be right here, ready?
Right.
Is about to get here.
Right. No, that was all very helpful, because I actually knew enough to go some back roads, so I could avoid different sections of 28 getting onto Route 6, so.
Well, we have some of those displays at Cape Cod Mall and the Food Court, and we have them at the Cape Cod Community College, and looking for other population centers that will tell folks where their bus is, how long it takes for it to expect the bus to get there. And we also have Google Transit Trip Planner, as I've alluded to, where on your iPhone, you can just, you know, point in an address and just find your transit options to get to where you need to go. So, it's a lot of exciting stuff.
Do we have an app for that yet? Is there?
There are a lot of apps.
Yeah, I'm sure there are. Okay. So, we'll have to have a list of apps.
As a matter of fact, there's an app supposed to be coming up where you can actually figure out where the farm stands are.
Right. There's going to be that.
Now, before we leave the subject of transportation, you know, some people might wonder if they have, say, an issue with regard to a road or a bridge or a ramp, as to what the process that they can follow in order to get some attention to what they perceive as a problem. And perhaps you could, you know, I know that at the Cape Cod Commission, through the Transportation Department, we operate the Transportation Improvement Plan Updates. And perhaps you could, you know, tell folks how they could have their concerns addressed, because the MPO, of course, has representatives in each one of the communities.
Again, it depends a little bit on where the issue is taking place, if it's a state highway or not. Certainly, Cape Cod Commission is a frontline for receiving a lot of comment and input, and then trying to channel that to the appropriate parties. So, if it's a local issue, we work closely with what's called the Joint Transportation Committee. They meet monthly. There's representative from each and every town. They're kind of the go-between on transportation, between their boards of selectmen or town council and the public and the planning process. And certainly, if it's a state highway issue, we have contacts with the district office, and we can pass on those concerns. Every once in a while, we'll get something about a traffic signal not working, and, you know, at least we'll know who to call.
Well, I think that one of the points that I want to make the public aware of, since we're talking about transportation, is that the Department of Public Works in each one of the towns is usually a member, and I think people need to know where the members come from, the Joint Transportation Committee. However, the final decision with regard to what goes on in the Transportation Improvement Plan is from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, who has representatives there. There are now four districts, I think, with representatives who come from boards of selectmen, and they qualify in each area. They have a local election, and they nominate one of the selectmen to be that representative. I serve as the county's representative, county commissioner's representative on that. And of course, the Cape Cod Commission, you know, has a, now, is it you or Priscilla that's a representative on that?
We are only the staff to help out, but the Cape Cod Commission is self. The chair of the Cape Cod Commission is in need, but they may assign those duties to another Cape Cod commissioner.
So, I think that it's important for people to, you know, because I think this question comes up every once in a while. Why don't we have, you know, an extra exit off of Route 6? You know, that bridge is falling apart, you know, when are they going to finish the repair on different structures? And of course, the continuing issue of, when are we going to do something about planning for the replacement of the bridges, you know, as far as dealing with the Corps of Engineers? And one of the, you know, one of the questions that comes up is that we do need the support of our congressional delegation in order to get the attention of the decision-makers within the Corps of Engineers, because the bridge, which is very important to all of us, is under the jurisdiction of the Corps, and all the Corps considers is the bridge itself, not the, you know, not the interconnectivity. And in a true holistic transportation activity, you have to consider how you get to the bridge as well as going over the bridge. And that's, and that distinction is something that I want to make sure that the people here know, because we do need, as I say, the people's support in order to start that long-range planning with regard to the bridge and the interconnectivity that's part of it. And certainly, Transportation Week is, you know, is a time to focus on that.
Well, all of those meetings, I should just say, are listed on the Go Cape Cod website, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the Joint Transportation Committee. At the bottom of the first page, when you go to gocapecod.org, there's a little Google Calendar. You click on it, and it tells you the date and time and location of those meetings.
If I could just add something about the MPO that you're talking about. I previously, in my previous life, I actually chaired the MPOs for five years around the state. And MPO members have immense responsibility, and that is to program every dollar that comes into the region for any project. And it's often hard for someone to get on the MPO team and try to, and be expected to understand their responsibilities off the top. So, one of the things that, Bill, you just mentioned was a project that might arise throughout the region. Who do you bring it to? Well, one of the three responsibilities of the MPO members is the Unified Planning Work Program, which is more or less a study. So, folks who have concerns about, say, Exit 2 up in Sandwich or another bad traffic signal intersection, that's a forum to come and bring it to the attention of the MPO, because there are funds available to study it in more detail. And a lot of people don't realize that, so.
We spend, or the MPO directs the expenditure of millions of dollars. I believe this year it's 15 million altogether. Well, in any case, it's a substantial number, and it's a group that I think people should be aware of, because what I find in my travels is that we have all of these conduits in order to get things done, but people are not aware of what the ordinary process is to accomplish these objectives. And of course, all the MPO meetings are open meetings, and, you know, and people are encouraged, let's say, to come. And they're usually held over the conference room over the Cape Cod Commission, to take advantage of the, you know, technology over there with the whiteboard and everything. But if they got bigger, we could move to a bigger venue.
I have one other question, and I know this is, you know, an enormous undertaking, but it's something that I think that we here on the Cape will probably have to look at down the road. And it was brought to my attention, again, I was watching some travel show on PBS, I'm sure, and it was, again, going into one of the older cities in Italy, and because it's become very tourist-centric, and a lot of people are going there for tourist reasons, they're having more and more people leave their cars in lots outside the city with electrical transportation going in and different, and very consistent. And I've thought of that in places here. I know it would be, you'd have to number one, have a mega parking area on the other side of the bridge, or at airports, or ferry lines. But is there ever a thought that down the road, especially, you know, when you're going into the outer Cape, you have one road, mainly Route 6 from Eastham all the way through down to Provincetown? Is there ever an, is there anything that we could ever consider by towns or regions where that would make sense? I mean, and I'm not asking you to answer it now, but I just feel that somewhere down in the line, that's going to be called for for us. It might not be for the next 10 or --
Well, it's a very good question, and there are two things that speak to that a bit. One of the things that I'm doing is, we're right in the middle. We just awarded a contract to do a comprehensive rail study to get folks to the Cape for a car-free experience. We're going to hopefully have a weekend summer passenger rail service emanating from South Station in Boston and possibly Penn Station in New York, market appropriately in the metropolitan areas, get people to the Cape without their cars. Once they get there, we have nice, new, clean, reliable, punctual buses to get them to the respective 15 towns. That's one thing that we're hoping to start on Memorial Day of next year. The other issue is where my, where our Hyannis Transportation Center currently resides is 10 acres that the lease calls for transportation uses. And so, we're undertaking a master plan, working with the town of Barnstable, and Joanne Bundtich, and John Clam, and Markell's, and others, to look at parking issues, to see if we could centrally locate, you know, some parking. We've got Highline issues and, you know, Steamship, and try to coordinate. I know the commission's been working on Exit 6. We're really trying to work on something that would address the parking issues, but it is, it is a problem, and other than my car-free experience on Cape Cod, there's probably always going to be costs. It's hard to get people out of their cars, so.
It is.
So, we're trying to make sure that we plan accordingly.
I just want to mention one thing. If somebody is looking for an experience to get down to Provincetown, enjoy what Provincetown has to offer in terms of venues for eating and drinking, you can leave your car at the Stop and Shop that is in Orleans.
Orleans, yes.
And you can, there's a fixed route, Flex Bus service that will pick you up there and take you to Provincetown and back, if you didn't want to travel, you know, beyond Suicide Alley to go down there. You can also stop at the Shaw's in Harwich and take that and go from there to Hyannis using the, was it, is it the?
Hyannis to Orleans service?
What is that called?
H2O.
What is it? H2O. You can take the H2O into, you know, into Hyannis, and then you can transfer to the Villager and come here. And I've actually done that, and it's not a bad service. And for, is it three bucks now? Two bucks? Two bucks for fixed route?
Yeah, it's a good service.
Yeah, it's a good service.
And it's also, there's also, you can take, if you're up in Boston, you can take the ferry, because of high-speed ferry that brings you right into Provincetown if you want that Provincetown.
And then, when you get into Provincetown, you pick up the Flex Bus and get up to, you know, get up to Connection in Harwich to take the H2O into Hyannis. And actually, you can continue from there through Falmouth to Woods Hole. So, if you're willing to invest the time and have a really scenic experience on Cape Cod, right now, for less than five bucks, you can get all the way across the Cape, which is a lot cheaper than what all those galleries have.
And also, just to mention while we're here on camera, and if anybody's watching, I know that with the National Seashore, you're looking to increase the bike racks so that it's more than, you know, if a family of five wants to get on, they'll all be able to get on and one parent won't have to.
They're also working with them, excuse me, they're also working with them to purchase a bike trail for families, as you said. The one length of the Cape Cod rail trail or something feels that they can't ride back. We're going to have a trail for bikes to take them back.
Great.
And that's imminent, so it's another thing we're doing with them.
Excellent.
Well, I would say that, you know, time flies, and we're now at the end of the period that we've allotted for that. Do you have any takeaways for us?
Well, just thank you very much for always letting us come in and talk about important matters.
Well, thank you. You're doing a great job, and I've heard more of the RTA since you've been Ethanol and only good things, so.
Thank you very much.
You too.
All right.